All right, so seeing we have quorum, I'll call a meeting to order at 6:02. A reminder, I don't believe we have a non-public session scheduled. I'm looking at Esther.
Right.
We're still clear on that. And I believe we do have a couple of visitors, so we'll at least call out Kristin over there. Looks like she's working, slaving away in the kitchen, cutting. Yep, okay, be careful, focus.
Love it.
And then Brad, welcome as well. If you want to, if there's anything you wanted to bring to the board, now would be a perfect time.
Oh, yeah, I didn't realize I could propose a question.
Absolutely, go, go right ahead.
So just in forward-thinking Fall 2021, are we starting to poll teachers so we don't run into a staffing issue? Whereas teachers, staff, are they ready and able to go back to work? And those teachers that might feel unsafe, that are waiting for the vaccine, once they get the vaccine, are they willing and able to go back to work? Again, just forward-thinking to Fall 2021, are we polling teachers now to see if we will be properly staffed?
So good question, and I think Esther, I see your hand up. I mean, I think that it's obviously going to be a topic of conversation over the next few months. But I think Esther has some feedback, as she and I spoke about this earlier this week.
Yeah, Brad, this is Esther, and so as of now, teachers are expected to be in the buildings teaching unless there are space issues. In other words, in order to accommodate the six feet or the remote request from parents. So the only reason teachers would be out now is either because of space, they have to have a classroom and to accommodate the remote requests from parents, or they have qualified for an ADA accommodation that they must be remote through their physician. So it's not really a choice, it's not a choice for teachers anymore. It's either you're in teaching, the principal has asked you to stay remote because of space, etc., or you've qualified through our ADA accommodation that you're remote, and that goes through a federally regulated process, which requires doctor's information, etc.
Okay, so teachers are required to be in school, so I guess the next question is, I guess, I remember Dr. Ryan speaking, saying something about the vaccine, once vaccinated, are we still going to be working around this space issue then? So with the staff fully vaccinated, then are we going to still be suffering from a space issue?
I think we're waiting to get what CDC guidelines say in regards to, because as of now, kids aren't being vaccinated yet in for this year. I think it's going to depend on, as they learn more about the vaccination, and can vaccinated people still carry the virus? I don't think the data is quite out on that part yet, and so that I don't have an answer to yet, Brad.
Okay, that's a very frightening response, but I guess we'll just have to work through that.
I have an answer for you. Not that I don't have an answer, it's that in general, CDC hasn't put out any guidelines as to populations that are vaccinated and what that could do to space requirements and/or masking requirements. And as you know, we're following the CDC guidelines, and that's where we have rooted a lot of those decisions around space and this health and safety of our students and staff.
So teachers are required to be in school?
Unless.
Unless.
Unless they qualify, right, unless they have their own personal medical issues or family medical issues that a doctor says they cannot be in the situation where they could be in contact for a variety of reasons, immune systems, things like that. Or they are teaching remotely due to meet the request of parents that want their students remote and/or space issues.
So it sounds like SMS's major hurdle will be what the CDC puts out for. You guys are waiting to make decisions on, hold on, let me rephrase that. You, even though the staff will be fully vaccinated, you guys are still going to have a space issue problem.
We don't, I think it's too early to say, I mean, it's a piece that needs to be considered. The other part that honestly, you know, I think this is something that's evolving even now, is the ability to do rapid tests and be able to understand, you know, what that exposure is, right? And at this point in time, a test result is still taking two days to come back, right, or more, right? Which is meaning that we have to quarantine entire classrooms, cohorts, etc., right, as a result of it. So I think, Brad, it's hard to commit to anything right now, because six months from now could be very different. But the intention of the board, and I believe the administrative team as well as the district, is to get back to in-person learning as we traditionally know it. It may look a little bit different still with masks, it may look a little bit different still with some form of social distancing. But your statement there about around a six-foot mark, right, is a challenge in most schools, and is certainly at SMS.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks for your time, thank you.
Thank you, great question.
Thank you.
All right, on to the approval of minutes for December 9th. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I think we had the same people for the 9th and the 21st, let me just double check here. Actually, no, we didn't. Well, so we'll do them separately, because I think Sarah, you weren't at the 9th, you were at the 21st. So any modifications or amendments to the school board minutes from December 9th?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Krista.
7.1. And it's, hang on, I wrote it down, it's seventh line down. It says, Ms. Maggery asks how teachers are feeling. That's a lot of teachers are teaching, or teachers.
How our teachers are feeling, okay. And yeah, I'm looking, who is doing notes? Esther, are you taking notes for us?
I'm going to send Jen the recording.
Okay. And we are recording, okay, perfect. All right, thank you, Krista, anything else? Cheryl, Sarah, Erin?
No, that's what I saw too, Krista, lots of feelings.
Lots of feel, always lots of feelings.
All right, so do we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion by Krista, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Cheryl, we'll go roll call vote, starting with Erin.
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Sarah?
I'm going to abstain.
That is right, and I am an aye as well, okay. So 401. Okay, on to the school board minutes for December 21st. I didn't see anything there either. All right, so if we don't see anything, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Erin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Cheryl, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Erin?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right. Moving on to reports. I didn't get a chance to sort of put together, I think most everyone was on the joint chairs call on Monday. See heads nodding, I know Krista, you were there, Erin, I think you were there.
The board meeting, not the joint chair, right?
The joint board, correct, thank you.
Yeah.
A couple of conversations there, running, you're pertaining to a few things. And I know part of it's covered in the SAU topic, but unfortunately, the HR director bowed out three hours before the meeting. So that process starts all over again for the district. But the other part was a fairly lengthy conversation around the, you know, the governance and where we stood there. And I apologize, I had to unfortunately get sidetracked by a work emergency, so I didn't hear the final minutes of that debate. But I don't know, Krista or Erin, if you had any sort of further thoughts on that, so for Sarah?
I think having this conversation in the middle of a pandemic is a little crazy to me. I mean, it's, do, the way they left it is, come back to your boards, talk about it, and see if that's something that we even want to change. I don't see how we can change it. I haven't been on the board long enough to know that the different options that there are, but based upon Esther, what you had said, I don't think it's the right time for the conversation like that. Maybe revisit another time, what are your thoughts, Erin?
So, I mean, that many people, it's so difficult to make any decision, or so, they're just like a handful of people that monopolize every minute of those times on those calls. But I don't think there's a good way to restructure, and definitely not right now, this is not the time. And even comparing the numbers of meetings the boards have been having, this isn't the time to compare any data, because this is not data that is normal, this isn't the time.
Can you, can you guys clarify, yeah, can you clarify a little bit? So you're talking about a restructuring, can you be a little more specific about that?
Well, I think the high-level issue was that we spend too much time, you know, meeting, right, and trying to make decisions in that, you know, the belief was that we spent more time on average than other districts, which spawned a conversation about how we're different from other districts, and how, you know, our governance process, right, or structure, you know, is adapted to fit a rather unique scenario in SAU 16, where we have multiple towns feeding in. The question came from the Exeter School Chair, is there a better way for us to structure this to make it more effective or productive? For lack of better terms, and do it in less time? And that, you know, everyone, they felt that, you know, there were too many meetings, that there are meetings on top of meetings, which I think when you looked at what started this was the conversation around even the the hybrid committee, the going back, all the different committees that spun up last spring to try and figure out what, you know, the fall would look like. So again, it's, it was a little bit of a, I would say it was a little bit of a one-sided argument back. And I guess the question is, is how much do we want to get involved in that? I tend to agree, I don't know that there's a better way to do it, other than, you know, maybe we do put a limit as to how long individuals can talk, because there are definitely people who will talk all night long if we're not careful.
Time is not the length, it's the frequency.
Oh my gosh.
Well, and we'd love to rehash the same point over and over and over again, which, I don't know, I think that's more of a, you know, sort of a chair management function, I guess, is, and not to put poor Travis on the spot. Travis is trying to herd the cats, which, you know, sometimes can prove challenging.
Yeah, I would agree, I felt when the conversation opened, I thought, oh please, I don't want to be on this. And I agree with what Krista was saying, was in the middle of a pandemic, we've got a lot of stuff going on. We have a lot of meetings too, right, and it's gotten better certainly, but I think that is, that is part of what they're trying to highlight, is that in a, you know, moment of emergency or crisis, or, you know, something that is not atypical, you know, we have a clunky and cumbersome process. And I don't disagree with that, but I was just trying to think through the complexity of changing it. Given the way, you know, we were all elected through our towns, we all have the same equal vote when we're voting, and to just, you know, streamline it by create, giving, you know, decision-making power to the joint chairs, I'm not comfortable with that, I mean, that's, that's not our decision to give, really. Anyway, I agree with, with not taking this up right now, and it could be just, you know, exhaustion and exasperation, don't want to talk about it right now, and maybe another time is a better time. That's, that's my point.
Erin, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I always think, I've given some thought, since I've only been a school board member during the pandemic, and never actually gone to an in-person meeting with the joint group. So my only suggestion is not restructuring, it's the schedule. I was thinking maybe we, instead of having joint board, joint chairs meet one night, and then the joint, and the evaluation committee meet another night. What if those meetings were stacked on top of each other? So instead of people having five different meeting nights a month, what if there's, you know, after the joint chair meeting, then there's the joint board meeting, and then after that is another committee meeting? So if you're going to these meetings, you're there for, say, three hours of your night, so that maybe it's easier for people to get there? I know it's painful to be there for four or five hours.
Yeah, I think that the reason it was broken out that way was because historically, and it hasn't been this way recently, there were some marathon sessions that I know Esther was a part of, that where we weren't leaving the high school until midnight after getting there at 6 o'clock. And so a lot of this was broken out so that we weren't having four to six-hour meetings. And again, it depends on how hotly contested the topic is, which I don't want to say we haven't had hot topics, but I think we've managed it, believe it or not, better. But I also, I think there's an opportunity just to manage the meetings more effectively would be my first solution to this. And, you know, if it requires, if it requires boards to talk beforehand, right, even if it's in a, you know, just a whatever Esther would call it, a non-public meeting, but just a workshop, right, to have a conversation so that we were aligned and have a uniformed conversation. I mean, to Cheryl's point, we all have a voting, voting right on that, right? But oftentimes, I feel like, you know, people are just hearing these things for the first time, and then being asked to make a decision right then and there, when in reality, that's not the appropriate way to do it. But, yeah, that's more of a, just have we managed the meetings more than a structural change? All right, any further conversations on that? The only other part I had for the chair, for the chair report is, we do need someone for the world-famous superintendent evaluation process. So.
I'll do it.
What was that?
I'll do it.
Okay, Krista has volunteered, so Krista, I'm going to be passing your name on to Tim to plug you into that process.
I thought it was just the chair.
It doesn't have to be the chair, it was what we had discussed before, but that was never read on from the committee. So, and where I'm going to be off the board, I won't be there to do the final pieces, so.
You're not running again?
I'm running away. Kate's face was priceless on that. Yeah, I will not be running, which actually brings up another point, and I didn't get a chance to find it, but anyone who is interested in filing for the open vacancies, I believe it's the end of this month, I will pull it up. But if you want to be a part of it, I think the last week of January, you have to file your intent.
Sarah, is yours up too? So you're running again, right? Okay.
Oh, I don't know.
Oh.
That's a marital discussion. I'm still on the fence, because that would bring me to nine years if I finish this next term.
You still have small children. You're still invested, I'm not above begging.
I concur. I'll sign the petition.
Harry needs you.
There's, there's always the write-in contingency, right?
Yeah.
Careful what you wish for, Eric.
Yes, ah, Esther. Okay, I'll let you know the last day of January.
All right. So that's all I have for the chair report, I think the financial report, I don't see, I know they were triple-booked today, so they were trying to run through everything, but I, my conversation with Molly, it sounded like everything was still in a very good place. Final balance, pardon me, spinning my head, but that's the way it shows on my screen. Still at 914,000, which is encumbering everything to date. But obviously, not the final number that will increase as we get closer to June. Esther?
Yeah, just in regard to the financials, that, that 900 number is, is accurate. I just want to make the board aware, because I know Kate's going to bring up some expenditure ideas, and so I just asked for information from the business officers. I did receive the budget balance as of January over the course of the past few years since '15. Just to give you kind of a point of reference, how this budget balance compares to other years. Last year FY '20 was right around 340. The year before that, in January, was 50, right around 55,000. The year before that, in '18, was around 438. Fiscal year '17 was 688. Fiscal year '16 was 366. And in '15, it was 532. For unreserved fund balance over the courses of those same years, you range as a fund balance of starting with '15, from around 395, in '16, 298, in '17, 334, in '18, 386, in '19, 132, and in '24, 10. Projected as of today for fiscal year '21 is 767. So I'm just giving you that frame of reference, again, those are projections for this year, and how it has been in the past years before that. So you have that frame of reference for that conversation that Kate will bring up under her principal's report.
Yeah, and the only thing I would point out, the was it 2018 where we had the 55K number? That was a difficult year, where we had switched software, we had a surprise with teachers, but the number, the dates before that was a previous financial, not model, but it was just the, the, things were done differently, and I don't think that all the invoices were as aggressively put against the number at that period of time. So the last two years of 410, oh, sorry, the 340, 914, I think those are more accurate representations of where we are, given how the accounting is done. Molly, and, why am I blanking, it's two Ms.
Michelle.
Two Ms. there, I can't figure out, that's why we have Kate and Kate, it's a lot easier that way. Molly and Michelle, right, have done a very good job of making sure that everything that can be recognized is recognized earlier, rather than those things sort of rolling in in the May-June time frame.
Yeah, and as well, I think Kate and Kate and Selena budget, and create a budget, that's much more aligned to expenditures and previous expenditures than perhaps those other 15, 16 years. So that combination of those teams working together, I think is, I agree, Eric made it much more an accurate reflection.
All right. All right, if that's the case, any questions on the financial report before we move on? We will move over to the superintendent report.
Thanks, I just have, I don't have a lot to report, because we just had the joint chairs, and we talked about the, not at the very last meeting, but in December, the portrait of an educator, that work continues. I just did send you all, that's on here, is the second item under my report, the balance scorecard. I just sent you the link again via an email, so if you do want to take a look at that, Chris is keeping that open till the end of January for boards to fill in, and that's what you started your work on at the joint board in the breakout room. So you may want to take a look at that, that's that gathering of what you think, knowledge, skills, and mindsets, and how you would measure educators, students, and community growth, and different ideas, what you're looking at to measure. So feel free to go into that link, it's on line 57, and over to Stratum Board, the work you started. If you look at that and you have questions, just, you know, shoot me an email or something, and I can help you, or shoot Chris one. But I just wanted to remind you that that is available for you to look at, as well as get input into as a board member. And like I said, I just emailed that link again to you all. The only thing I really have in pertains to Stratum is I have received three more letters of retirement. So I would like the board to approve those, we've received one from Carol Stringham OT, one from Frank Spencer, who is our school psychologist, and one from Diane Griffith, who has been our school counselor. So those are the three letters of retirement that we've received in the past week and a half or so. I'd just like to openly and publicly thank all three of those folks for their dedicated time at Strata Memorial, and all the students and staff that they've supported over the years, appreciate all of their efforts. And I would ask the board to approve all, accept all three of those letters of resignation slash retirement.
We say no first, because we don't like seeing anyone leave, but then I think we will begrudgingly accept their letters of resignation with the very best.
What's the second name again?
Carol Stringham.
No, got that one.
Frank Spencer.
Frank, thank you.
And Diane Griffith, we would need a motion to accept those.
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation.
I'll second.
Second by Cheryl, any further conversation? I'll just add, you know, again, thank you, I know Frank and Diane, I'm more familiar with them, I know they've been in this, in the building for quite some time. So I thank you to everyone for everything that they've done for our students, our children. So we have a motion on the floor, roll call vote, Erin?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Thank you. And my last item is, I have been playing full and tag with our moderator, Mr. Emanuel, but we have confirmed for the Stratum School District meeting, which is, is really set, the parameters by the moderator, that's the one thing. That's the one thing that they really have control over by law by RSA. So we are going to hold that school district meeting on three, five as scheduled on the original schedule. It will be at Exeter High School, however, to accommodate for social distancing in the auditorium and allow for an alternative classroom if people come and want, choose not to wear a mask. That stage per view is large as well as we can spread board members out. You can mask. The PA system at Stratum, as we know, doesn't support very well trying to have a large audience in the back of that room or spread people out throughout that building. So that's one of the reasons. We also have the availability that auditorium seats, I think twelve hundred. So we generally get around forty. So to spread out in that auditorium, we should allow for more than twelve to fifteen feet easily between people as well as being masked. So that is a go for our start time of our normal start time of six. And our moderator will be there to review when Kate, I think Kate, as you normally do present, in this case, our one warrant article for the proposed budget. So I just wanted to make that public that it is going to be at Exeter High School. It is legal to have it outside the town of Stratum. We did check that because obviously Exeter High School is not in Stratum, the town of Stratum, but it is legal to do that. The only other alternative is to have a meeting on Zoom. If you do that, then you have to put an article on the warrant that says, even though we did all this, you can vote that it's null and void because you held it over Zoom.
Couldn't we do CMS as well? I mean, CMS is technically in Stratum.
Yeah, except with the construction, it gets a little, a little more complicated. So I could certainly approach the moderator. Exeter High School is just the auditorium is larger and.
I don't see, I I'm just saying, right, if if for some reason Exeter doesn't work, I would look to CMS. And I mean, they're not going to be working in the auditorium on a Friday night, are they?
No, Exeter's all booked. The high school's all booked, but I can certainly look at the, I can talk to the moderator and look at CMS too, if that's what the board would like me to work with the moderator on.
I just assume stick with Exeter High School. If for some reason that doesn't work, then look at CMS. Zoom would be the last alternative.
Esther, can you, I can you repeat part of what you said? So I think I thought I heard you say if people come without masks. Is that, is that what you said?
Correct.
Can we require people to wear masks?
No, the the state constitution allows for a public input into this process. And since the governor has not, there is no state mandate to override that. There is, there is an Exeter town mandate, but the state constitution overrides that mandate. So the moderator, we will have a separate room available for anyone that's non-masked and I will get that meeting on whatever, you know, an LCD in there and it'll be streamed into there and then we will have someone in there that can get a mic to ask questions should they have a question or want to give input into the meeting. So we will, we will, we can allow them their own space. We don't have to have them all in the same room. And that was the other reason Exeter seemed to work well because there's some rooms close by that have the availability to stream in from the auditorium to a separate area. We'll have a separate entrance if you're in a non-masked area, et cetera. So trying to, you know, be safe and cautious of people's concerns as well as their rights.
So can I ask you a question? I missed the last meeting over here with the fact, did we put the budget to bed? Are we done?
Oh, on the, we decided that we were not going to be funding either of the trust funds, seeing as they had healthy balances.
Okay.
And there were no changes to the operating budget, although it sounds like there, there was a conversation upcoming about, you know, some needs.
Yeah, Cheryl, as far as the operating, the proposed operating budget, that will go to as is unless the board wants to change something to that public hearing coming up. I think it's February second. I will double check my calendar. I only seem to have one page right here. Not sure why. So that we have the public hearing, then we have the town meeting the fifth.
Okay.
That's all I have for my section, Eric, unless anyone has any other questions.
The the public meeting, just real quick, that was on which day?
I think, I think it's the I think it's the third, but I'm trying to find my, I'll find it. If you, if you want to move along, I will find it, Eric, for you.
All right, I just All right, so to the SMS administrative team.
So you guys have the principal's update. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that before we get into the second part of that agenda.
I love the flags. It's not a question, but I thought that was adorable. I want them in my house. Put them in the kitchen.
Cheryl, it's so cool to spend the time to read them all because it really is amazing, the different sentiments and the thoughts. And it was, it's really, it's very powerful to to walk through it and to see it. And at night it's lit up, which is even cooler. Yeah.
Maybe I'll come down and look at it. My daughter goes down to the school long boarding after school hours and maybe I'll go down and check on.
Eric, that date is February tenth at six PM for the public hearing, which we can do on Zoom. The school district meeting on March fifth that we will do at Exeter High School.
That's, that's what I thought it was. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you. All right. So Kate, we'll move on to the next part then.
Sure. So one of the things that we've been talking about as a, as a board in a group for about a year now, were some of the smaller things that we would like to be able to do to the facilities that would benefit us and also not be something we would re have, you know, redo or would be something that would need to be, you know, scrapped when you guys, when we finished the CIP project and all that kind of stuff, like what are the things that we could do now that would aid us and it would be really beneficial? One of those things we had talked about is that we have very, very limited space at SMS, as you're aware. And in particular, small spaces for one-on-one services or small group services. We are lacking office space, as you know, you know, we just, we have a short of a space. However, that being said, we have a kindergarten closet and we have a fourth and fifth grade closet. And we have a K one, two closet that are spaces that can be turned into workable spaces. And we've had three different contractors come out and look at it. And I would like to propose we use some of the unencumbered funds to do that. We, we've been wanting to do this obviously for over a year, but now with COVID and the virus, it's even more important to have this space. And so we had originally had the three quotes and submitted it to Helen Rist for the IDEA grant in hopes of that it would support it. However, those funds are a little bit more complicated and taking a lot longer than anyone had hoped. And so when I, Selena and I had approached Helen earlier this year, she said, I don't have any idea, not for her fault, but there's just so many variables that are, you know, in the way right now. So I would like to propose that we consider doing that project. I can tell you that Tim did reach out to one of the contractors that came, Bernier, that had come to give us a quote recently. And what Bernier had said is that one of the things we have to consider is that with the virus, there are new HVAC requirements for obvious reasons. And that was something that could impact the price of the project. So he did mention that we would want to, you know, think about a little bit extra on the quotes that we got before. So that's one of the things I would like us to discuss. The domino effect of that is we were, we are literally taking the only closet space that's available at SMS. If we utilize those three spaces for instructional space, we lose any and all closet space. Add into that, and we've talked about this as a board before, the shed that is outside is dilapidated and falling apart. The year before I came, you purchased a new tractor and that fits in, but all the accompanying equipment actually has to stay outside. So it's, you know, and granted, it is a tractor and all the equipment can be outside, but it's not going to last as long, as you know, even though it's metal, it's just, you know, subjected to the weather. We have two metal storage containers. And so I would, I would propose that we actually have a shed built that's appropriate, that has storage space, that stores the two tractors, that is weatherproof. I have Tim, I gave Tim a company I wanted him to look into to get to, so that the shed would be metal for obvious reasons. So we have that and those are domino effects. And then the third thing that's really substantial is the carpet in the twelve rooms that we've talked about for over a year, having those pulled up and having tile put in. I think that we need to chip away at that. And we have twelve rooms that are, we would consider dangerous at this point because of seams and they have bubbles in them. So that's where I would start.
So I guess the first question, do we have estimates for each of these projects?
I do. So the three closet renovations base, the original quote, we had three of them. They ranged from fifty six to sixty six. However, based on what Bernier said, you would probably want to, you know, look around eighty thousand dollars now, given the new requirements. The carpet for twelve rooms is seventy thousand dollars. And then the shed with all the site work, the cement pad, all of that stuff would be around eighty to ninety thousand dollars.
Sure, let's do it. I'm kidding. Without more discussion, but.
On the call?
What was that?
Bob just jumped on the call?
No. I'm channeling my inner bomb.
All right, sorry. Erin, go ahead.
Start with the shed. Is this in addition to or a replacement of the falling down shed?
It would be a replacement, so it would be in the same location. It is a little bit more of a square footage because the shed that we're proposing is a bit bigger than what's currently there. But if you've noticed on the one side of the shed is like a chain link fence that's there that has a lot of interesting things in there. It would replace that whole area plus the storage containers. We do own the storage containers. So we might be able to store them somewhere else if we need them or, you know, put them in the corner a lot. They don't necessarily need to be there in case we have things that we don't want to discard, but really don't need frequently. Whereas the things in the shed would be all the things for facilities, you know, the tractors and things of that nature. But it would also have a lot of the materials that we need to now store that would be in the closet space. So it comes with metal shelving, you know, it has a, the shed has a large garage door and then it has like a normal sized door. So you can get things in and out easily, but it would be similar to that. It would be in that area, just a little bit more of a square footage. Or actually quite a bit more.
The only question that comes to mind there is if we're storing paper and supplies and stuff like that, does that, should that be in a conditioned space, right? Because my my fear there is if you put it in an unconditioned space, you have fluctuations of humidity, which can, you know, ruin paper and all sorts of stuff. That would be my primary concern. The rest of them.
I can say that that's currently, I mean, a lot of the stuff that we put in storage that's of that nature, Eric, we store in giant topware for that very reason. So it's, you know, free, it's not going to be free of the humidity. I'm not, you know, I mean, but they're pretty airtight to upware. It's where we're storing our stuff now in those storage units, you know, so they are, I don't want to say subjected to the weathers, but they are outside without it being temperature controlled or something of that nature.
Sarah, go ahead.
Can I just ask a timeline? And I'm just thinking about outside people coming in and some of those safety concerns and questions. And I'm sure you've already anticipated this question.
Um, so actually, one of the things that I have talked to Tim about this and Esther and I spoke, she spoke a little bit about it last meeting. Given what's going on with COVID, we have the ability to ask for an extension. So as long as the project starts in the end of June, when everybody's out of the building, we have the state, if you submit it, and I'm, I mean, I'm not saying it's guaranteed, but you can ask for an extension so that the projects can extend when, over the summer, when people aren't using the building. So we wouldn't be having outside people coming in our building. The other part too, and the reason I brought it up today versus waiting a couple of months to see what the, you know, see how the year progresses, is that we would have to book these people now because they're going to be slammed over the summer because so many other places do some, you know, projects and they're all over the summer because nobody can go into buildings over vacations or even on weekends because it's still because of the virus.
So I I just have a question. I'm sorry. I'm not sure I understood that part about starting in June, even though we close our books at the end of June. What you're saying is there's some special dispensation this year for getting stuff done.
You have to apply to the state. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, there's, there's not. Normally, in in any year, you, as long as you have dedicated the funds by the end of June to projects, you have until the end of September. And you, if you run into some catastrophic issue, let's say the company you hired, the, the all of a sudden went belly up and you had to hire another company, you can notify the the state, which is the Department of Revenue and say, we need an extra month because this company we had scheduled went belly up, so we had to get another company. So it's not like anything you apply for, you just have to notify, but in general, you get, you have till September thirtieth, as long as you've dedicated the funds towards the project in board minutes to what the expenditure is going to be. And there are only certain things you can expend on, in other words, you can't hire staff with that type of money, et cetera. But you can certainly do projects like this with it.
Can I ask another question?
I think, she hit her hand first and then I'll go back to Cheryl.
Kate, if you had to prioritize these product, these projects, what's your order?
So here's my, so, so my first would be closet space and then carpets. The unfortunate piece of all of this, Erin, is I don't know how we have the domino effect of closets without the storage unit. And I've, I mean, Esther and I had this very conversation because ultimately for me, it's about what's in the building is far more important than what's outside the building. And not that it's not important to have it because it is, we need to be taking care of our equipment and there needs to be the facility space. I'm not, but the other two things have direct impact on students, right? So that was, but I don't know how to go, I can't figure out a reasonable way to try to figure out how we do it without creating some kind of storage space. And maybe, you know, maybe it's additional storage units, but that's so temporary to me if we need to also fix the shed. So I guess, I mean, we could certainly extend that if we were trying to prioritize it because those would be the first two on for me.
Cheryl, you still have a question?
Yeah, my question was about what is the square footage of these closets for each one? How are they going to be small workspaces? How small are we talking?
So the kindergarten closet is, hold on, I'll tell you exactly what it is. The kindergarten garden, woo-hoo, Cheryl, apparently I'm struggling this evening. The kindergarten closet is twelve by forty, and so it can be turned into three small spaces with doors. It would have a window in each of the spaces. So essentially you would walk in and there would be almost like like a long hallway and they would just have three workspaces, right, with doors and windows. They would put a window in each one. They would have their own doors. So there are three, you know, good sized spaces for for students and adults to work. The other two closets are much smaller and they would create one space apiece.
Okay.
So the other one, let me see if I can give you the exact square footage. The other two are eight by twelve.
Okay. Yeah, so these are substantial mini rooms. They're not like closets in my house. These are
Yes, correct.
These are usable spaces, definitely.
Correct.
So we pick up five small workspaces. I think it's sad that we're talking about how to squeeze workspaces out of closets. I, I think we need to do this one, in my personal opinion, for sure.
Chrisa?
Um, I know you said one of the closets was in the kindergarten section. Where were the other two?
So the other two, the Kate, the, sorry, the first and second grade one is the bottom floor, front wing over by where kindergarten first grade is. So Kristen Sullivan's room. It's almost where the OT office is. It's a, it's in between the OT office and the bathrooms, actually. So it's in the middle sections. But it has a door on both sides, which makes it accessible and great space for element, the primary kids.
I have another question for you. Well, this is to put things in, just in my mind to line things up. The building project, we're going to start planning that soon. soon or whatever, but that's not going to happen till how many years down the road approximately, would you think?
I think the discussion was estimating between three to five based on.
Okay.
Is that correct, Eric? I think that's what we had talked about.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't foresee being able to do it, do something any sooner than that. I mean, by the time you go through, do the planning. The best case scenario, you put it in front of the town next year and it gets approved and start building, but I mean, you're still looking at almost two years out from today.
So these are, I mean, we could use these. I mean, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to wait that long. Per se. Okay, thank you.
Kate Blanter, did I see you have a hand up or were you just waving to someone in the background? Okay.
I have another question about the carpets. What, what rooms are we talking about? Twelve rooms? These are all classrooms, I assume?
They are all classrooms. Yeah, I don't have the list home with me, Cheryl. I realized that when I was trying to get ready for the meeting, I left it on my desk, so I apologize. But I had asked. So it actually was part of the initial conversation that we had a couple of years ago when we started facilities analysis, because when I came on board and realized we had the situation and that we had kids playing on really old carpets and it was just really, you know, and so on. And so that really actually started the facilities analysis. And so when we had that done and then we, obviously the, the virus happened, I did ask Tim to, you know, go around and tell me like, where are we at of like, yeah, we can get a couple more years out of these or like, no, we cannot, we really should be doing these. There's a safety issue. We've had the carpet company come in a few times and try to reseam it to help us with that, but it's just, they're very, very old. And so there's bubbles and seam is broken and things like that. So we would, we would not be replacing the carpet. We would be replacing the carpet with tile. And I just, so that's just an important distinction and I want to make sure I'm clear about that.
Which is, which is perfectly acceptable in a classroom, right? It doesn't necessarily work for an auditorium or a music room, but for a classroom, that's.
It's actually the recommendation is to have tile for cleanliness, air quality, you know, for a variety of reasons.
Okay, so the total of this is about two hundred and forty thousand. And we're assuming this would come out of funds, funds that we have, right? Not not the building.
I'm proposing it comes on unencumbered funds at, based on the current unencumbered funds. And that's why Esther had those numbers prepared for you. So you'd have an idea of where we've been in January. The other thing I would offer, which you know, just as a conversation, I think while we're here making that conversation, we, we might want to say up to and, and give a buffer on that, just to go back to what Bernie had said when they came in and did. Just to give us an updated figure, just the other thing that Bernie said in, which again, we'll have to go and get updated quotes because some of these are, you know, about six months old, nine months old. Is that projects are taking a little bit longer because obviously they have to be following guidelines and there's less crew and all of that kind of stuff. So you know, there, I just want to be, I don't want to mislead you to say you're going to approve this and I'm going to turn around and be able to match them all perfectly from tonight because they do, would need to be updated. But I, I mean, Bernie said in the ballpark, he wasn't like, it's going to cost triple. It wasn't like that. I just want to be honest with you.
Chris.
Refresh my memory, what are our total unencumbered funds at this point in time?
Nine hundred and fourteen thousand.
So I guess with, with the contractors estimates, I feel pretty confident from my knowledge, previous knowledge is I know materials is going to go, be going up quite a bit. Which, which is to speak to what you're saying about. So even eighty thousand to me, there is probably most likely potential to go beyond eighty thousand. Would that, would that be correct?
So Chris, I'm with you. Like I think Bernie was, he did say like, you can expect it. I just don't, it's so hard for me to know because it's so far outside my expertise, but I do. And I guess that's why I brought up, Cheryl had said two forty or something. I'm like, I just would hate to come back and say, well, we can only do two. And now we didn't get on the list. If you guys were comfortable with giving it like up to, but not to exceed type of.
Right, just because I know the building industry right now between labor, material costs, it's astronomical. So I think that would be a really good idea to be able to have some flux in there and possibly cap it because I think it could go well over easily. Because things they are changing, especially in the, the, the covering environment. I feel like, yeah, we, we could use these rooms, but if it goes to a certain point, maybe we don't need all of them if it gets to something that's astronomical.
Would ten percent contingency be enough? Or is that not enough?
I would say fifteen to twenty percent above what's what they're saying. Again, with the new year hitting and, and the current climate, materials and labor, it's very different.
Yeah, I, I would be inclined to just do a, not to exceed a certain value and I'd build a buffer in. I mean, I think Kate, the other part of this is we would need to call everyone back in and get a you have two choices, call everyone back in and get a quote that we can execute off of, right? And we can bring it up on the next meeting and allocate the money based off of that, or our alternative is to take a, you know, assign a number, right? And then, you know, hope that it falls into where that fits. I mean, I, I'd like to have a little bit tighter numbers, I think is probably the best option. And then I think you could be able to take act, you could. If we move forward with it, you could have a decision by February tenth to be able to go and get those people lined up.
Do you think that's enough time to get them lined up for the summer?
I think if we were able to on February tenth, if there was a, a little bit more firmer number and you guys said up to, I would hope so. I mean, I can certainly.
Okay.
So I'm not worried about the, the, I'm sorry, the tiles, the carpet replacement with tile, because that quotes from eleven twenty-three of literally just, you know, two months ago. So I don't know that that will be much different. My, the biggest I think would be the, the construction of the rooms because is things as simple as like plywood have tripled in price. So I think Chris is right that that's the biggest I think question mark around what would the price be versus the other two, which are pretty, they're not as much in the, in the material part.
Chris, you have a question?
Given that they are booking up, builders are booking up fast and there are, is already, I mean, some are, it's a year out. I would be more inclined to give a wiggle room area and kind of give it to Kate at, to, to say, yes, we can afford this, even if, if there is this, we're this much over budget as opposed to wait, because what I would hate to happen is they can't get it in till next September and then we're still having all of these parameters. I don't think we should necessarily wait, let's.
So if someone wants to put a motion on the floor, we can, you know, have a conversation on it.
I hate proposing these motions. I never know what to say.
That's the best part about it.
Geez, I feel like I'm in law school. So I make a motion to, help me out a little bit, to approve to expend up to, spend up to ninety thousand dollars on the, for the closets to become usable instructional space.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to do them individually. So a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, any further conversation?
I, I don't think that that, so what I have here is eighty K. So you're saying ninety, do you think that's enough of a buffer?
Well, they said fifty-six, fifty-six to sixty-six before, but then given things that are upwards of eighty, so then we're adding another ten K. I mean, I think the, the point here is you know, we're, we're giving you authorization to spend up to, however, we're hoping that, that expenditure is sixty-six thousand dollars and that the rest of it doesn't get spent.
Right.
Welcome back, Kate. Sorry, you guys, I don't, come back.
That was me. I was listening and she was probably sitting in the waiting room. Selena had to send me a private chat. Can you let Kate in? Just full transparency. That's how engrossed I am in your conversation, just so you know.
I'm like, ah.
I feel comfortable, I feel comfortable with ninety, given that fifty-six to sixty-six thousand was the, the original estimate. And when were those estimates taken?
So gosh, it was last spring because we were writing it for the ID grant. So like May of last spring, let's see if I can find the exact dates. I probably have it with me.
It's up twenty percent off of that year.
If it, if it was that far gone, then we would, I would probably say a hundred thousand.
So one of them is from June twentieth, one is from June first, and the other is from June third.
Lot has changed. Can I revise my thank you, Sarah. I'll make another revised motion of to spend up to a hundred thousand dollars for, to change the closets to instructional space.
Give me about a second. Erin, any further conversation on that?
Um, my only comment would be, I, I just want to reiterate that we're if, if we, if we don't need the hundred thousand, we don't want to spend it on something else, right? Yeah, I just want to make sure I, that that's really clear, that authorization to spend on just this one thing.
Yeah, no, it, it's only for the, anything that's construction related to expanding, you know, that space or reconfiguring that space, I guess is the better term.
Before we vote though, should it be clear where the funds are coming from in the motion?
Yeah, this is, this is correct. Sarah's keeping us on point. So so coming from the unencumbered fund balance.
Needs to be a course on this or something.
There is plenty of them.
All right. I guess the only thing I would just say, you mean, to Chris's point, Kate, if we're moving forward with this, you know, time is of the essence, right? And I know you won't waste any time, but I would say we get that one going and then obviously we'll, we'll talk about the next ones here, but let's go through a roll call vote. Erin?
I.
Chris?
I.
Cheryl?
I.
Sarah?
I.
I'm an I as well.
So Eric, what I will try to do is I'll make my best effort that when we come back in February, I'll have a much firmer figure and a start date and stuff like that, because that's the kind of stuff that I should be doing next steps anyway, so that I can report out to you exactly, you know, much closer figures and when it'll start.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion for either of the other two?
Carpet.
How big is this gonna be?
How big is what?
How big is this shed gonna be, like in comparative to, comparison to what's there now?
So we've looked at everything from thirty by thirty up to forty-five by forty-five. It'll really depend on, they'll come and look at the site, they'll look at, you know, all of that kind of stuff. I think we, in my opinion, we err on the bigger. Because I think we have a school of, you know, five hundred and fifty, we have a hundred and thirty-six adults. We have two tractors. I think it makes sense to provide the space that we're not dealing with the same issue in five years when, you know. That's my opinion. I think, you know, the site, they'll come and do a full site analysis and make a decision about, you know, what's going to meet our needs and what's going to fit and all that, that kind of stuff, Chris. But it's large, it doesn't, it's not little.
Right.
Well, I'll skip into the, the carpet, can we do the carpet? So I'll make a motion to fund carpet replacement in twelve classrooms with tile in the amount of do we need contingency here? Seventy, is that a good number? Or do I need to put contingency?
I would.
Seventy is good, okay.
Contingency up to, I give a little bit of, I want to have to come back to it.
All right, how about up to seventy-five? Funded from the unencumbered balance for this school year, for this budget year.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Second by Chrisa, any further conversation? All right, I guess we'll go to a roll call vote. Erin?
I.
Chrisa?
I. I.
Sarah?
I.
Not an I as well.
Erin, is this your most favorite day on the board yet?
I mean, this is what I'm here for. Get rid of the carpet.
Oh, Erin, I should let you do that one, sorry. I didn't know you were so passionate about carpet.
I'm happy for any, I'm happy for anybody to get rid of that stuff. Let's burn it. Let's have a party.
I know, we might have made a new virus that we'll have to deal with, if that's the case. All right, onto the shed. I mean, I, I guess my, my initial thoughts on the shed, I do believe we need something. And I do agree that, you know, what we have is going to have to be tended to and the cost to tend to, it's probably going to be fairly expensive at some point. So it's probably a worthwhile investment. The one word of caution I would put out there is, you know, if we allocate money towards it and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to meet within it, you know, our alternative would be another storage unit. Not that they're the most beautiful things in the world, but that could be a temporary situation for the storage, because clearly if we're moving forward with the limited space, I think, you know, we, we have to have a, a place to put more materials, right? So hopefully this can fall within the budget that we, or the money that we're allocating towards it. And if not, right, I think we have to make sure that we have a contingency plan. So I, I'll make a motion to allocate up to a hundred thousand dollars to I, I guess we, we have to say to replace the existing shed with a newer, newer building out of unencumbered fund balance for the end of this year.
Ask a question?
Uh, you can, yes.
Well, come the new, when the new plan comes up, will that shed be torn down? Or is that, is that not going to be impacted by anything that we do in the future?
So my, my, my instincts, Chris, it would tell us that if we did with the giant CIP project did some sort of renovation, that they would probably put closet space within the building within a renovation. But we absolutely are always going to need outdoor storage space. We have the two tractors, we have other equipment, like, we're going to always need that. So it absolutely makes sense and we would not tear it down. I think what we potentially might want to do when we have the people come and do the site work is potentially look at a further corner of the parking lot. So that if they ever decided during a renovation, they wanted to change the route around the building for the bus or something like that, it would be potentially out of the way. But I don't ever see a reason that we would not need the storage. And I think it's absolutely essential for facilities to have something like that.
As long as I, I didn't want that to be temporary. So I'm happy to hear that.
Well, I put a motion on the floor. Do we have a second for further conversation? Second by Sarah. Well, I think, Chris, to your point, right? I mean, this should not be a temporary situation. And I guess the only concern I'd have there, Kate, is if we move the shed to a different location, the costs go up associated with moving the electricity to it as well.
Okay.
Great.
So I'll make sure when they come, Eric, to look into that as well.
Yeah. And I, I think just, Chris, to your point, I think, given where it is in the parking lot today, I wouldn't anticipate that you would, you know, if you were to build onto the building, I don't think that's the direction you would go. We'd probably go further out to the back. The only way that potentially could be a problem is if you decided that you were going to put a brand new building on that piece of property, then potentially it could be in the way, which that would be a different story, but I don't think anyone really wants to be entertaining a brand new building at this point. All right, any further conversations? Uh, all those in favor, Erin?
I.
Hi. Chrisa?
I.
Cheryl?
I.
Sarah?
I.
And I'm an I as well. Um, so I think same, same thing with that, Kate, right? You know, let's get some quotes if for some reason that's not going to fit, then bring it back to the board, figure out what we're doing. The next question there is to look at storage units. It is an alternative to it, at least for the, the building materials. All right. Onto old business. COVID update. Who is doing the COVID update?
I was just asked by board members to put that on there on every agenda. So I don't have anything in particular, except as you all know, vaccinations are, are being rolled out. We are working with our school nurses and seeing if there's a possibility that they may be able to run the vaccination process for our teachers. That's still in negotiations and under discussion, but we are trying to pursue an avenue to get our teachers vaccinated quicker. And with a process that would enlist our trained, our trained nurses. So that's in conversation as well as rapid tests continues to be in conversation. There's opportunity. Perhaps we can. Perhaps we can get those at, at no cost. Remember, we talked about them previously, there was a cost associated with that. Again, our Dr. Johnson, our consulting physician, is working on that with us. So those are the two things that are in motion right now around COVID for us on the school front, as well as the ongoing identifying of close contacts, et cetera, et cetera, in our schools.
Yeah, go ahead, Chrisa.
So I, and I know it's early, but there are discussions within the community about what's going to happen next year. Should I put my kids on waiting lists for private school? And I know we don't know much, but I think as much as I think that maybe we can have a conversation or what, when is that communication going to be reinitiated with parents? And if there is a conversation, just because planning is happening for next year and is there any way that we can give them guidance or anything like that or not? I mean, I know we're still really in the dark at this point.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I hope within the next few weeks, we can have more clear information around the vaccination of our teachers. I mean, I think that's a critical and key component of particularly for the fall, right? And then as that begins to roll out, I anticipate there may be changes in the rollout plan at the federal level within the next, you know, month and a half, six weeks, which may affect the state rollout. And so as soon as we get anything that's a definite, you know, the state's still in that flux situation too, so it's, it's, it's hard, it is hard to say absolutely yes, all our teachers will be vaccinated by the, you know, end of March. I don't, we don't have that kind of assurance yet from folks, so we're trying to pursue anything we can to speed up that process. And then what does that mean? That's the conversation for boards, right, with administrators and all of us about if our teachers are vaccinated, but our students aren't. What does that look like? What does CDC say about distancing and masks? Can we go to the three feet distancing instead of the six feet if the adults are all vaccinated, you know? So again, we just don't have those answers from, from any medical professionals yet that I'm aware of. I mean, I'm sure people are working on it. It's just, you know, we attend those meetings every week at the state level with Dr. Chan to try to get as much information as we can. Dr. Johnson, our consulting physician, is very up to speed and really working with us around the rapid testing process. They come in batches of 40. You can't break up a batch. So we're looking, okay, how many would that mean? And new fields would maybe never use 40 stratum, would they get five packs? So we're, you know, those questions we're trying to work through. Like I said, those are the two main things on our radar right now, because those decisions and what happens, I think, will then begin to directly affect the next planning, which makes sense.
Right. I just, I mean, I guess I think a way to communicate all of this to parents, I don't know how, I don't know what, but what I think that I would hate there for there to be disgruntlement because of lack of communication, even if it is, we don't know.
I think in Dr. Ryan's weekly pushouts, everything we know, even if it's the same thing, you know, the numbers, et cetera, we keep pushing that out. You know, we, we understand that everybody would love a plan, absolutely.
Was hoping to have some kind of just a communication to say, we don't know, like, I want to tell you, we still don't know yet.
Yeah, absolutely communicate that to Dr. Ryan.
Okay.
And I would like to just sorry, I'll let Sarah
That's okay, go ahead, Kate.
So I was actually just going to add that we've been talking, we had shared with the community when we were rolling out the plan to return to in-person on November 9th, or stay remote when families had a choice, that we were going to review that in February and then, you know, speak, reach out to our community. So I actually spoke with Esther this week about that after Selena and Kate and I had talked about this. We're going to be sending out a survey to our families, just looking for their feedback regarding, I shouldn't say feedback, looking for data about whether or not if their child is a remote student, would they be interested in them becoming an in-person student? If their child is an in-person student, would they be interested in becoming a remote student? I, there's not structural changes that we're going to make in the sense of, the guidelines are still the guidelines. We are still going to be six feet, we're still going to be masks. We're still going to be our alternating blue and white days. But we did tell the community, we wanted to collect data and review it, and if there was the possibility of making changes, then we were going to. As we know, there really nothing has changed. There's not enough change that we could, or there's new, not new guidelines from the Department of Health and Human Services or the CDC that we can make structural changes, but we're certainly going to collect parent data. We're hoping to actually send that survey out on Friday. Because, you know, I'm just gonna, this is obviously arbitrary, I'm just kind of using a hypothetical, but if we had 14 remote students whose families felt like they wanted them to be in person for the remainder of the school year, and we could evenly distribute them, because that's the piece right now. We still have those guidelines in place, so I can't, you know, say they were 14 second graders. Well, I couldn't take, we couldn't take 14 second graders and we, we simply would be well over our class size and not be following guidelines. But if there were 14 kids total and it did work out, then I would want to honor that for parents and for our students, because we said we would do that. We said we would reach back out to them and see. And the opposite is true for if we had a number of in-person students whose family really wanted them to be remote for the remainder of the year, and we could absorb it in a way that didn't create, you know, huge class sizes, we would want to honor that. We said that we wanted to do that. We want to do what's best for our kids as often as we can or all the time. So we, our plan is to send that survey out on Friday, asking for the data back, to then be able to turn around to our parents and say, this is what we're going to be able to do to accommodate the requests or to honor as many of those as possible. So in terms of an update to families, Chrisa, that is our hope to send that out. And to again articulate that we don't foresee there being a change in options, in terms of like increased options for the rest of the year. However, we would like to entertain if someone would like to switch their platform.
Right, and I think, again, I think that's more from what I gather is just the communication piece. I think that's perfect.
Has there been any conversation around bringing a recommendation from the SAU to do remote after the February or April break?
Sarah, it's my understanding from Dr. Ryan that he, that there is no request to do that. The travel is more voluntary travel, meaning that it's less family oriented oftentimes. It's more individual families that maybe travel for vacation. So at this point, of course, this board can always consider that, that, you know, that, as you know, that's a board level discussion should you choose to approach that, but from the SAU, there are no recommendations made at this, this day, on this particular day, at this particular time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I had one, but I lost it because Kate, Kate beat me to the punch first off, and then I managed to forget what I was going to ask, so maybe we'll come back. Kate, you answered my question before I could answer it, so thank you. All right, new business facilities committee. So I think last time we discussed setting up the committee and seeing who was going to be interested. I suspect there may also be an interest to see who is joining the board next. If there's interest there, we look for two, probably two members to be a part of that facilities committee, but then also to decide, you know, who else needs to be brought in, right? We need some parent representation, also some town representation as part of any committee that would be moving forward. So it's the first part is, is do we have any volunteers right now? And if we don't fill it, this will remain an open item into the March timeframe or April timeframe, depending, and at that point, be able to move forward. Esther, go ahead.
So I just want to bring to the board's attention that you may want to consider deciding whether you want to make this a school-based facilities committee versus a school board-based facilities committee. The difference is, if it's a school board-based committee, you have to post every meeting and open it to the public and take minutes. If it's a school-based committee with board representation on it that doesn't exceed a quorum, you don't have to do that. So just for you to consider.
And how is that, we go and create that committee, you have to designate that as part of voting for the committee?
You essentially would ask Kate, as principal, to create that committee and with two board members, as well as the board discussing who else they would think should make up the committee. But it essentially would be Kate that owns that committee, so to speak. Does that make sense? That's really the difference. The board can still dictate and have, you wouldn't want to have, if you had three on it, then of course that would be a quorum and you'd have to post it and it would be considered a meeting. So the two people make sense that way.
But you're considering that it, you know, yes, it's a difficult one, considering, you know, the town's going to want to have input as well as some level of knowledge as to what's going on. I think we've got to be careful there in that, you know, school base makes it easier to not have to take notes and post meetings. However, you know, this is something that you should be open to the public and should be posted for people to provide feedback.
Sure, I just wanted to make the board aware. That's all.
So, Chrisa, and then Erin.
I think we should make it a school board. I mean, I would think this is important and a lot of, of the public have something to say about it, and I'd like to see them have access to the meetings and, and be able to contribute should they want to. Just for what it's worth, I think, I'd like for it to be a school board meeting.
How do they do it? How do they do it for CMS? Because they had the first year where it failed and then it changed into the second year. Somebody know?
What was the question, Cheryl? I didn't quite hear you.
How did they do it for CMS?
It was, it was not a board committee. It was a standalone facilities committee. That board members were on, community members were on, students were on, et cetera, and they met, you know, and, and then they would do presentations to the board and that became the public forum for input, et cetera.
Erin, you got a question?
Since this is a long-term planning thing, can it start as school and then maybe after its first year, switch over to school board?
I think you guys, the board can do really anything you choose to. So, so I think the short answer to that is absolutely, because you all control how you want to go through that process. There's no saying in every, if you made it a school-based one, you can't make, you can't make every single one public should the, should the board request that. Do you know what I mean? It just, um, sometimes we're having to post, et cetera, et cetera, can just, it throws logistics into it that can get cumbersome, but doesn't have to be. It just is, especially if you set a set time that you're going to meet the fourth Tuesday of every month or whatever, then that makes it easier. You know, I would, I would ask for that just because it's helpful to be able to make sure those get posted. I can just kind of do that. I can post all the dates on one posting if you do that, and then if you add a meeting, just post a separate meeting. So there's certainly ways logistically to make it simpler. I just wanted to make the board aware. That's all.
So thoughts, questions, concerns? What do we want to do?
I know you want to hang out with me. Don't deny it.
I'm interested in working on this, although I, I have never done a facilities project like this, so I, I, you know, I'm not an expert in comfort, in construction, et cetera. I'm just trying to think through the differences, school board versus school-based. And my only experience is working through the co-op that first year and then that significant change in how they did it the second year. Led by the facilities. Facilities director, whatever, at the middle school.
Yeah, to Erin's point, I think, you know, there may be different phases where the board decides to bring in different people, like the second time around, the co-op brought in, you know, a, a public relations firm. They really managed that, the family, the time it passed, that did the videoing and the pictures and that, you know, so based on where you are at the process, you, you may morph and change your group size, you may morph and change, you know. So really, this is just, I think, to get started in those initial conversations and kind of who's going to be on the committee. Do you want a student rep? Do you want, those kinds of questions are part of that forming that you may want to have your two board members and Kate and myself or whoever else meet and just talk about how you're going to organize it and who's going to be on it, and then keep, continue to move from there.
Chrisa, see if you have your hand up.
Well, can we, I feel like to, can we figure out at today's meeting is the, so say we want two board, two board members and a selectman, and so we have the, those openings, and then say, fill the openings once we have the board that's going to be established. Sorry, after Eric ditches us, so we could, I mean, if we have somebody who is super interested and has a specialty or something like that, I feel like it should, everyone on the board should have a fair shot to participate, should they want to. So maybe at this meeting now, decide do we want it to be a school board or not school board meeting, and then how many slots are going to be on there, and then fill them when the new board comes in. Just because I think it would, if we're going to have new board members, they should have a shot as well.
Yeah, you're limited to two board members on the committee. If you have more than that, then it is an official board meeting and we post to that process.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, is if we have whoever is on the board, who's going to come on the board and they want to be on the meeting too, I mean, I think everyone should be able to have an opportunity to participate, or we can narrow it down to the two. I just feel like with the new board, it should, we should have this conversation, because it's relatively new group.
I think there is some, I mean, I, Erin, I'll come right to you. I think the first part is, is we need to establish something, right? But then, you know, to your point, you're going to have at least one new member. And this is not a short duration project, right? So
Right.
Giving everyone equal say. Erin, you got your hand up?
I was just gonna say that there's always committee. I don't want to wait until March if we're talking about this tonight.
Well, and also, committee members can change too, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be, the person who signs up tonight doesn't have to be the person who runs the entire duration. It's just a matter of, to Esther's point, you don't, you can't have more than, well, you can, you can have more than two people in a meeting. It just means at that point, you have a quorum and it then becomes a, you know, it has to be a posted meeting at that point in time. If everyone, if more than two people are going to show, and there, there will be times where the entire school board attends those meetings and they would need to be posted regardless of, you know, the formation of that committee. So it's not to say that anyone's going to be precluded from the conversation. It's really to establish who is going to be the primary contacts, at least established now, right? And that obviously can change over time. So I guess procedurally, Esther, what's, what's the best way to move forward? Is this a motion vote? This is the first time in eight years we've had to create a committee.
Right, you would make a motion to form a, if you're calling out a facilities committee or a building committee, whatever you want to, however, whatever name you want to give to it with up to two board members, or if you, if it's really up to you, how you want to structure that motion. Doesn't mean the two board members can't change, or, you know, you're just saying there's a limit to be represented on that particular committee.
And we don't even have to assign the board members tonight. We were just establishing.
Just establishing, it sounds like you're just establishing a committee unless you choose to do that.
But is it a board committee or a school committee?
It's a board, you're making a motion to have a board building committee is what I think you're asking me, right, Eric?
I was just, yeah, I mean, if it's a board-driven one, then yes, it would be a motion, but if it's a facilities-driven one, then Kate would
Correct. You would just direct Kate to do that. You would not have to take a motion.
Okay, so your hand up.
So I guess I'm, I'm wondering, just based on what Esther said before, just for the sake of, there's so many pieces, because this is, I've lived this, it's a complicated, long process, Esther, you know. I'm wondering if it makes sense, given Cheryl and Sarah have shown interest at least to start. I'm wondering if Cheryl, myself, Esther, Sarah, and maybe Tim get together and have a, just a meeting before the February school board meeting and talk about, you know, how many seats do you want on it? You know, what, what people do you want, all that kind of stuff, and then bring back a proposal to the, for the full school board to talk about in February. Because I feel like there's so many moving parts and it might be nice to have like a more intimate conversation about what can take place, and then Cheryl and Sarah could come back with a proposal, and then you could have that discussion. I just think there's so many variables right now and it's hard, it's almost nebulous right now, and until you have a more in-depth conversation that's more focused, it feels hard to define or put in a vase, I guess.
I think those conversations should be public, though.
They can be. I mean, they, they certainly, any one of them can be public. I mean,
But I'm saying that meeting, so like the meeting, Cheryl and Sarah, they, they join the board, then I join the committee, then I think that how it's going to go and these beginning thoughts should be open to the public. So I don't think it should be a behind closed doors meeting.
I guess I'm not suggesting that it's the actual committee, Chrisa. Maybe I was unclear. I guess what I was saying is because Cheryl and Sarah had suggested they were interested, we could talk about what the committee could look like. They're, I'm not even saying they're necessarily the committee members, because like you said, you might want to wait till there's new board members and get everybody's board members and get everybody's interest, but it would at least get the ball rolling of what you would want that committee to look like. And you could certainly make it a public workshop, workshop. I mean, that's fine too, I don't, if you want the public to be able to hear it, I guess I just feel like it's really hard to have a conversation that shapes it when it's out here right now.
Yeah, and I think that the reality is the more people who are involved in it, the slower it gets going. There's some foundational work that has to get done, right? And then bring the appropriate people in.
Yeah, I, I kind of like Kate's idea, I have to say, of having another conversation around potential structures and how it could look, rather than just trying to decide now that whether it's going to be one kind of board versus the other. And, you know, we're going to have two board members and I don't know what else, how else we would define that at the moment, other than to say we're going to make a committee. I, I think.
Have that conversation now.
Well, she suggested other people who aren't here, like Tim.
Oh, like Tim on the committee, you're right, Cheryl.
Yeah, just.
He's important.
And he's a facilities guy, right? So he would probably have some good things to say. I kind of like.
In an effort to move the conversation along, I, I think it sounds like Kate, I think it would make sense for you to sort of start this process. And we, you know, we have a few board members who've expressed interests in at least starting the initial conversations to this. And then, you know, with the idea that you're moving forward, right? At some point, right, we really want to make this a, a public conversation, right? I think there's, you know, as long as we structure times for public input and post it and, you know, give additional heads up, whether it's school, you know, newspapers or the God forbid, the Facebook forums that everyone loves, so that people have, you know, some insight as to, you know, what's going on. And, you know, we do our part to let, let people know what's going on. I, I think the, the first year of it, quite honestly, a lot of it's going to be, a lot of the heavy lifting is going to be done behind the scenes. So Kate, you up for the task?
Absolutely. I'd like dark tea, apparently, black tea is going to give me all that caffeine that I need to, to be, to be doing it. Chrisa, you better, you're falling in line too, you're going to be addicted to that black tea before you know it.
So good.
All right, so any other questions on the facilities committee? I'm going to take us back one, because I figured out what the question was that was sitting in the back of my head. And I, I ask it and I might duck for cover right afterwards, but is the vaccine going to be mandatory for teachers or is that going to be voluntary?
We're consulting with legal counsel on that very question. I don't have an answer, because again, we have constitutional rights, et cetera. So.
Well, you have constitutional rights, but you also have a teacher's agreement that would have to be modified if the language is anything other than voluntary.
Correct.
Um, any other items to be brought before the board? Seen a lot of enthusiastic faces. Our next meeting, I'm not sure, I don't I have on the calendar is February the 10th, 6:00 PM with a public school, a public meeting for the budget. Followed by our regular school board meeting. And after that would be March the 5th at 6:00 PM at Exeter High School. As well as March the 10th at 6:00 PM, which would be a regular school board meeting. The only other part I was trying to find and Sarah, this applies to you as well. And I don't think I saw it. You'll have to post for post for the, the, the opening on the board or for your, your next term.
Yeah, that goes with the public hearing posting, which now that I've talked to the board about Exeter High School, et cetera, then we will get that posting up and running. And that has the information on it of how many board seats are open, et cetera. Talking about Eric.
Well, there's that, but you also have to register with the town, but I thought that was in the end of January, that was why.
Yes, the filing is usually, I know for Exeter, it's 120 to 129. I assume the dates are very similar, but I can, I think they're posted on our webpage, hold on.
I just wanted to, I wanted to discuss it now, seeing as, you know, this is the last meeting before that will close.
Here we go, I'm on the right place, it's on the SAU 16 webpage. It says candidate filing periods for district elections. And then you can click on your town. And it's scrolling, the duration is the 20th through the 29th. At the stat, you have to go in and talk to Stratum Town Clerk Joyce Charbonneau, and there, the number is posted there. The hours are Mondays, 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. Tuesday through Thursday, 8:30 to 4:00. Fridays, 8:00 to 12:30. One note is on Friday, January 29th, the town clerk's office will be open from 3:00 to 5:00 PM as well for filing purposes. The Stratum School District has the following positions open. School board member, two seats for three-year terms. School district clerk, one seat for a three-year term. Again, that's on the SAU 6 webpage, webpage, if you go to SAU 16. And then you go under district, you will see budgets and elections under about us. Click on that and you will see on the left side, candidate filing periods, and you just click on your town you're interested in.
Excellent, thank you, Esther.
Welcome.
All right, with that, I look for a motion to end the public meeting at 7:37. By Cheryl, do we have a second? I'll second. I'll second that, roll call vote, Erin?
Aye.
Chrisa?
Aye.
Cheryl? I think Cheryl was an I there, I think. And Sarah?
Aye.
And I as well, thank you very much, have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, everyone. Big day.